Want to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Mr. Rice, you want to start us off?
Yes. Let me just recap where we left off. And as everyone can see, we have four commissioners here tonight. Commissioners that have conflicts that are unable to attend. These meetings are recorded. We have transcripts. And I think all the board members are aware that they need to either watch the recording or read the transcript or both. So with that, we left off, I believe. Mr. Morleyer, you were recrossing Mr. Lambert.
That's correct. I had not started my recross, I don't believe. So I just have a few questions.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Lambert, good evening. You testified that a few of the questions that I've asked of you on cross-examination were not relevant for conditional use, but rather for land development. Do you remember that testimony?
Vaguely, yes.
But let me just clarify. If changes were needed to be made to the application, the application that's in front of this board right now currently, if changes needed to be made during land development, significant changes, that would require a submission of a new application, correct?
It depends what those changes would be. If you go back to 28135C, the conditional use, right, is, you know, what is required of us is a generalized site plan shall be submitted as part of any conditional use application. It is not intended that such plan be engineered or contain a fixed architectural layout such as would be required under 255 subdivision of land. Right, so that's going back to that general requirement.
Understood. But let's talk about specifically, let's hone in a little bit. If you were to, you testified that you haven't spoken to the fire marshal, that that specifically would be something that would be done during land development, correct?
Yes, typically, we've done that during land development.
But if the fire marshal during land development had concerns over the layout of this development, as you've proposed it, and as is in front of this board for a conditional use hearing, you may have to make significant plans to the project, to the project as it is right now, correct?
I don't have those, you know, answers from him or concerns from him. You know, we have a full access driveway that would provide access throughout the development. So I would not foresee any. If they have comments, we would address them at that time.
Well, let's talk about something a little more specific to fire safety. If, I'll draw your attention to the radius, the sharper radius on Drive B. So the bottom right-hand corner, if you have the drive and it's a U shape, right, and I think we're all familiar with that U shape, the bottom right-hand corner, we've talked about how that is a sharper radius than the bottom left-hand corner, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if the fire marshal, for example, on that came in and said, hey, listen, this is an issue. This would have to be softened a bit or softened significantly. That could have an impact on this proposal, correct?
So number one is we did a turning template that show the fire apparatus that the fire department has suggested we use in the past, shows full access, being able to maneuver that corner. So there would be no real reason to enlarge that radius. But using your hypothetical, if we had increased that radius, we would be able to accommodate, you know, changes to that within this plan, which would be a minor change to the plan.
But the changes might be, for example, cutting into the open space, which is immediately adjacent, correct?
I'm going to object. This is total speculation. There's no evidence that any of these things would be required.
Objections are ruled. He's, it's recross, and he's answering the question.
And the recross was specifically, I objected last time. He's been cross-examined now for hours and hours over several nights, taking our case out of order. And I objected last time. And Mr. Nelson said that it would be strictly limited to the questions on redirect. This is beyond that.
I don't believe that it is. He specifically talked about how many of the questions, in his opinion, that I've asked have been regarding land development, more appropriate for questioning during the land development process and not during the conditional use process. So I'm probing a little bit as to why he believes that's the case.
I mean, I read the transcript, Mr. Brosman, and that was mentioned on a couple of occasions, that that would be a land development issue. So he's opening the door. He has a right to.
Not about the driveway. Not about the driveway, not about the driveway radius.
Continue, Mr. Morleyer.
There's no evidence about that.
But he has a right to cross-examine anything he says on his redirect.
He's been cross-examining him for hours on different.
There's no limit under the MPC. Give me some authority to prevent. As soon as you go to redirect, he has a right, as does every other party in this room, for recross. So that's the way it works, unfortunately. Mr. Morleyer, continue on.
So, Mr. Lambert, if you were to soften that radius, you would have to potentially maybe cut into the green space, the open space, correct?
It may be modified, yes.
Or you may have, and/or you may have to cut into the amount of townhomes or the size of the townhomes in that bottom right-hand corner of the development, correct?
There's, depending on what the concern is, there's a myriad of design solutions to that.
Is it the intent of the developer to go through land development and then sell the rights of the development to another company?
I am not the developer.
I object. This was not part of redirect, what the developer was going to do. And the applicant is the owner of the property.
I think during his recross, he talked about this process and going through this process. And I think that it would be relevant. But I can move on, Mr. Rice. Mr. Lambert, you testified that a single-family home development would cause more earth disturbance than what is proposed. Do you remember that testimony?
I do.
Why is that?
Potentially, it causes more. Right now, we have the dedicated open space. A single-family plan would not require open space and would really kind of open up the, potentially, the entire site to new homes.
Is there any documents that show that comparison besides the one exhibit that's been put forth showing the single-family, your potential single-family home development?
No, that's the only, we have potential single-family home development.
So there hasn't been any other documents, though, to show, to buttress your testimony that there would be less earth disturbance?
No, but a single-family plan doesn't have the open space requirement, right? So we have the open space requirement, which is really keeping that two-acre area in the center. An acre of that is really undisturbed. If you were creating single-family lots, you would likely use the entire area. This lot, this zoning district, off the top of my head, I believe is a 7,000-square-foot lot requirement. Given that smaller lot requirement, you will likely be disturbing the entire property.
So let's just talk about that for a minute. So the open space, your testimony is that there will be, and I think that this is what you testified to at the last hearing, very little earth disturbance in that open space area, correct?
I believe my testimony was there's roughly an acre of disturbance. It was using Exhibit A12, Sheet 5 of 17. There is a long dash line with two dashes showing the limited disturbance. And really, the center of the open space area is all undisturbed.
You testified previously as to review letters from the township. Just to be clear, the last review letters from the township for this development came in August 2023, correct?
I would have to check the date. But it was, yes, it was some time ago.
You testified, you brought up what we've been referring to, or I've been referring to, as Hamilton 1. And that would be the conditional use hearing that started in 2020 for a different application. And that the current plan has more contiguous open space. Do you remember that testimony?
Yes.
Just to be clear, I want to clarify for the record. You indicated that it was denied because there was less, not enough contiguous open space. But just to be clear, there were multiple reasons why that application was denied by this board. Do you recall that?
I don't have a copy of the decision. But yes, there were a few reasons why it was denied. One being the open space and the stormwater management underneath that open space.
Mr. Rice, I have no further questions at this time.
So we'll go to the residents for recross, for anything that was testified to by Mr. Lambert on redirect. I'll go through the list. Amber Levy. Mr. Chawla. John Clemente. Brian Curly. Mark Gado. Cindy Hansen.
Cindy Hansen, hi. When you were bringing up the comparison properties that you were talking about in your rebuttal, I just have a question. Do you realize that you were comparing R4 properties to R5 properties?
I was comparing the type of development. So it was a multifamily development is really what I was comparing in those instances. It was looking at the section of the code really related to the driveway and how that's applied. The section of the code, I'm pulling it up if you give me one second. It's 25540 refers to multifamily and attached dwelling residential development. And there's standards associated with that. That exhibit was going through. And so that applies across all zoning districts, not just the R4, the R5. So that's what that exhibit was talking about, was really the driveways and how the township has interpreted the ordinance to apply the driveway code.
Okay. But you do know that there's a pretty big difference between R4 and R5?
There's different requirements, yes. But again, the purpose of that is looking at the driveway. So it was looking at that 25540 ordinance.
Okay. Then I want to ask my second question. Thank you.
Kaz Holloway, questions?
My name's Kaz Holloway of 241 West Wayne Avenue. And I would like to ask Mr. Lambert some questions about your testimony at the last meeting. I believe you put up a plan of Jardan.
Mr. Holloway, just make sure you get into the mic there. It's.
I believe it was Sheet 6, 7, 8, 9. It was right after the Villa Strafoort job.
So it was Exhibit A25, Sheet 6 through 9.
Yes. So I think Sheet 6 had, is that possible to put? I guess we're not putting up on the screen or?
I can put it on the screen, but what's the question?
On this Jardan, you have it listed as 237 West Wayne Avenue. Actually, there's multiple addresses. The property that you showed is 237 is actually 243. But the question I have you, on this breakdown, you mention, you say that no sidewalks along the common drive. And that is not accurate. And I, the plan, there is a five-foot sidewalk running all, that meets ADA requirements.
Mr. Lambert, that question, is he aware of that?
So if, is it possible to put your presentation up on the screen? I think that would be a lot easier.
Remember, Mr. Holloway, you need to ask him questions.
I will.
Not testify yourself.
No, no.
You could do that later, if you want.
That's good. So could we go back to your first sheet? Up and down? There we go. On this sheet, you're showing no sidewalks along the common drive. I'd like to ask you how you came to that conclusion.
So what's shown here is Sheet 9 of A25. It's a photograph looking into the site. And you can see this is the common driveway. There's the mailbox there on the left-hand side. How we came to the conclusion was there's no sidewalk on either side of this. There is a concrete area adjacent to the building. When I was there, I didn't perceive that as part of the driveway sidewalk.
Well, where I have the cursor right here, that's an ADA access, and that's a five-foot walkway. That there's a verge, a planning verge to the left of the drive. And you testified that there, this was a 20-foot drive. That is correct. There is a waiver on our plan that provided for that. But this, there is a five-foot sidewalk that surrounds the entire office building right here. You mentioned on your plan. So I just, for the record, I just wanted to make sure we clarify that our townhouse project does have sidewalks throughout the project. One thing I would like to say as it relates to their plan, we do have parking in front of the garages similar to what they're proposing.
And similar, when you get to the common driveway between the units, there's no sidewalk in that location. That'd be Sheet 10.
No, there's what you don't see. This is a 20-foot drive. That's correct. There is parking at the end of the drive, and there's a turnaround area on the left. You testified that there was, it was a dead end, and there was no way to turn around. So that's not accurate.
There is a dead end. There's parking at the end. You use the individual driveways to do, I guess, a K-turn to turn around.
I believe you also showed our record plan, if I can bring that up. And the, if you look at the record plan, here's the five-foot sidewalk running right alongside. The sidewalk runs all the way around. And there's ADA access to this parking lot and ADA access to the common area. And then there's a sidewalk in front of the, both townhouse units on either side. So it's possible for the residents to walk. I just wanted to be clear that, from a townhouse perspective, there are sidewalks, and it was provided for. There were not sidewalks on both sides of our common drive.
Mr. Lambert, you're aware of the sidewalks that?
Yeah, as I said, I did not perceive the sidewalk under the overhang of the office building as a sidewalk, per se, along the driveway. I understand it provides circulation. Likewise, the ones in the rear, it's kind of underneath an overhang of the structure. So it's really kind of at the garage door. Might be that circulation. But it wasn't really a sidewalk, per se, from a township standard. But I understand the point in the circulation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Thank you.
Ted Hyman. Catherine La Forge. Miriam Mahoney, questions? Jennifer Pichette. Margaret Rushman. Mr. Serene. David Satterfield. Steve and Megan Sherry. John Schuda. Caitlin Silver. Gregory Zari.
Here, no questions on the cross-examination. Thank you.
Sharon and David Willis.
No questions.
And Cheryl Lutz. Okay. Does the board have any final questions for this witness? I think we.
The, on Sheet A12, oh, sorry, A12 Sheet 9 of 17. 9 of 17. And it has the appendix on, Appendix C on the right side, standard erosion and sedimentation control detail, like the standard notes on the right-hand side.
Yep. For some reason, my digital copy didn't have, didn't have Sheet 9. But give me a second.
Yeah, A12. I think it's, for some reason, it skips.
I have Sheet 8 and Sheet 10. Hang on a second.
Or before, I think. For some reason, I think 9 is before 8.
That is, 9 is before 8.
Oh, here we go.
So, and then all this stuff on the right side is standard plan to control erosion and sedimentation during construction, during construction.
Correct. These are typical notes that are required with the NPDS permitting process. So obviously, as I think we've talked about before, after we go through this process and go into land development, then we'll go also through an NPDS permit.
Yeah, and it's great that you guys have it on there. And it should be on there. The final one, just the final one, 33 is what, the fine that somebody would get if they don't do something correctly. It's like $10,000 a day. So that, and it's, I mean, it's a big deal. The, so, and it's for construction, during construction. But also, post-construction, you have, you want to keep water off of other people's property post as well. So my question is, does, are there fines like that for post?
So I'm not sure exactly what fines.
Well, number 30, like 33, all the way to the bottoms, $10,000 a day if you don't do that stuff.
Right, that's for the erosion and sediment control. Your question was for post-development.
Post-development, if stormwater, if the system doesn't work.
So they have a maintenance and obligation, maintenance and operation agreement that they will enter into. It's a recorded document. It gets recorded to talk about what has to be done. And there are obligations. I don't have a copy of one in front of me. But there's obligations in there to maintain it. I'm not aware of any fines, per se, of, you know, something explicit like this.
Okay. The, and I know in the past and in Radnor, we're trying to handle stormwater. And even if we put in the best stuff, VMPs, it doesn't always work. There's always maybe something, you know, leaves on top that block it or something. And then one year, there was a six-inch snow and then sleeting rain that went on top. It all froze. And then next came a rainstorm. Everybody got flooded, spots that never got flooded before. Can you say, since we are pre-construction, make it that this thing not only can do what you want it to do, but just in case some weird thing happens? Like, is it better than the standard, which is just?
Right. So in my experience, when modern stormwater is installed on a property, you know, and I use the kind of the barometer, when we do have these extreme storm events, our phone rings off the hook, right? And so we get constant calls for the following, you know, couple of weeks of, we had XYZ storm problem. The calls we typically get are from established areas that don't have stormwater. We typically do not get calls from properties that have stormwater, right? So the systems are functioning even in those extreme storm events, right? They're absorbing the water, capturing it, and controlling it is typically what we see. Can a system account for every variable? I don't think one can, right? Is, we'll put in enough kind of measures and kind of backup areas of where it is. The way the site is arranged, we will be capturing, you know, even if you get that large snowstorm with sleet and then rain, the way the site is oriented and graded, we will be capturing a lot of that water. Even if you get, you know, the first inlet overflows, it's going to get to then likely a second inlet. And we have a little bit of redundancy in that system.
And then, like, per your design, during construction, you guys, some company go out there and check that it is to spec, you know, within tolerance?
Yeah, so the Conservation District and the township will be doing inspections during construction to make sure that the measures are being installed per the plan. There's requirements if they have, you know, an overflow of any of the erosion and sediment control measures, of what they have to do to remediate those. And in my experience, the, you know, both the township and Conservation District stay on top of the construction sites.
Thank you.
Mr. Lambert, on redirect examination, you were asked if it was common for stormwater management facilities to be underneath common open space. Do you recall that?
I believe the question was a little bit different than that.
I just read it verbatim from the transcript.
Okay. The way I recalled it was that it was clarified to say underneath kind of green space. And it doesn't necessarily have to be under, you know, quote-unquote, "common open space." But it was clarified, I believe, under, under green space.
Well, let me start with that, maybe. Would it change the answer that you gave if I were to represent to you that while reading from the transcript, it says, in your experience, is it common for stormwater management facilities to be underneath common open space?
Yes, they can be under common open space.
Okay. Is it common for that?
We did a project in Tridifern. We have a stormwater system that's directly underneath the common open space or common area of that property.
And Ian Radnor, that you're aware of?
As far as the, under common open space, so I'm using that term very, you know, defined as the ordinance. Trying to think of the projects I've done with common open space. I'd say more of the projects we have don't have a required common open space. But I would say that we've done many stormwater systems under green areas, under green lawns, under, you know, athletic fields. We've done, you know, many underground stormwater systems with, you know, various green features on top of them.
Understood. I wanted to explore that a little because you said you didn't quite remember the question as I read it. I wanted to explore. Let me go back to what I wanted to ask you originally. Is there stormwater management facilities under the open space in the plan as it's currently proposed? Because I understood the answer was no originally. And from the answer you gave on redirect, it seems like I may have been wrong.
So using, and I'm happy to pull it up if you'd like, A12 Sheet 4, the darker green area was the, was the common open space in the center of the property. In the bottom right-hand and left-hand corners of that, there are kind of dashed rectangles. And those are stormwater management systems. On the left-hand side of that page, under the zoning summary, there's an open space requirement which identifies that the minimum open space is 25%. Of that 25%, I believe it was 10%, and I can pull up the code section if you like, may be stormwater management. The zoning summary on the left-hand side identifies that 7.9% of the common open space has stormwater under it. So there are, you know, the corners of it do have stormwater management under it, but is within the township's allowable amount of stormwater.
Got it. There is a broken line in the dark green area. There is a broken line in the dark green area that seems like it sort of bypasses the, the, it's labeled as PCM, PCSM/BMP infiltration bed number two and PCSM/BMP infiltration bed number one. I had initially assumed that that broken line represented the limit of the common space, but I understand you to be saying that, no, those infiltration beds are in the common open space.
Correct.
Got it. Can you describe those beds? What are they?
They'll be underground beds. I believe the, the current design is a storm brick system. So, from grade, you would have a open lawn, right? It's, or, you know, in the instance of PCSM infiltration bed number one, you know, it's underneath parking and, you know, part of that open space. And so, really, it's just an open lawn is, is what you're going to see above that. There may be a observation port or, you know, a small access port to that. But really, it's, you're going to perceive as an open lawn there.
Got it. Are those bricks, I assume, man-made objects?
Yes, they are. It's a, it's a, there are various proprietary stormwater products, and basically, stormwater is creating a void space, and those systems are just simply creating a void space under there. It's a, it's a manufactured, you know, product that, you know, instead of using a pipe and stone system, we were using the storm brick system.
And I assume that they would have an ascertainable location on or above the ground?
You would not know where it is under the ground aside from any observation ports.
But their location could be ascertained. I mean, they're going to be plottable on a map. You could use some kind of a detector.
They are going to be shown on a plan. It would be based on the construction as built. But, you know, from a, a physical standpoint, looking at it, if you were standing there looking at the crash, you would not be able to ascertain the limit of that stormwater system.
Okay. I, I want to be cautious not to get into true cross-examination and talk to you about your direct testimony, but I, in light of what you just said, I do want to ask the question. On direct, you said, "We are proposing no structures within the common open space." Why are these not structures?
These are storm, it's, it's stormwater management, and so, I'd go back to the common open space.
And I'm going to object, I believe, even though you said you don't want to cross-examine the witness, you're cross-examining our witness.
Well, I don't think why questions usually constitute cross-examination. Not good cross-examination, anyway.
Your objection's noted in the record, Mr. Brosman. But the board up here are sitting as judges, so it's not really cross-examination.
Yeah, they're judges.
Right, so...
That aren't supposed to do cross-examination.
They can ask whatever questions they want to ask.
So, so, I refer to 280-91A, "Not less than 25% of the tract area shall be designated in the subdivision or development plan as common open space. Common open space may not include buffer yards, floodplain, or wetlands. No more than 10% of the required common open space may be used to meet the planned stormwater management requirements, and all required common open space shall be contiguous unless the Board of Commissioners approves otherwise." So, I would say that the proposed stormwater PCSM infiltration beds are meeting the planned stormwater management requirements and do not exceed 10% of the common open space.
Understood. And this is really why it's not cross-examination. I want to give the opportunity to explain this to me because I have the question. How do you square that with 280-91-sub-D, which concludes, "Areas set aside for common open space shall contain no structure other than a structure related to outdoor recreational use?"
I, I wouldn't consider the, you know, it depends what your definition of structure would be.
Is the structure given in the zoning definitions?
Mr. Larkin, the ordinance specifically allows stormwater management systems under the common open space. This township put that in the, in the code. That's why it's allowed?
Okay, so, I, I'm left with the same question. How do you square that with subsection D?
I, I don't think that under the township definition of a, that this would qualify as a structure.
I don't want to leave it there. I want to ask you the question, why?
Because a structure was anything constructed or erected on the ground, so this is kind of under the ground, not on the ground.
Are, you're looking at... Apologize, give me a moment.
284B, the definitions.
Thank you. I see anything constructed or erected on the ground or attached to the ground, including but not limited to buildings, sheds, manufactured homes, and other similar items. This term includes any man-made object having an ascertainable stationary location on or in land or water, whether or not affixed to land.
I'm going to object again. Mr. Larkin is an attorney. He's a litigator, I believe. He's cross-examining our witness.
He's, he's testing your witness's testimony, and he's asking questions.
If I were, if I were cross-examining you, Mr. Lambert, I would have stopped asking questions, and then I would have just relied on the previous testimony. I want to figure out, why is it not a man-made object having an ascertainable stationary location on or in land or water, whether or not affixed to land?
Why did the township amend the ordinance to allow stormwater management?
Mr. Brosman, Mr. Brosman, you're out of order. Let him answer the questions, not you. Let him answer the questions. He can either answer them, or he can't answer them.
I'm going to get a fair hearing here, and our witness is just being cross-examined.
You complained about the length of the cross-examination, and you're objecting to things that you can't object to. I understand, make your argument down the road, when you file, whatever brief you're going to file. So, Mr. Lambert, if you can answer the question.
It's a stormwater facility meeting the ordinance, which is permitted under the common open space.
Okay. Those are the questions that I had.
Any other questions? I think we're done with Mr. Lambert. Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Thank you.
Mr. Brosman, do you have another question? I do. I'm going to call Mr. Panzak. We might need a short break to coordinate our exhibits, if that's okay? More than five minutes? Thank you. Are you going to...
I'm going to put up here.
You guys square, you're going to do the...
I think it was fine.
Mr. Brosman, you're ready with your next witness?
Yes.
Okay. Let's have sworn in, please.
Answering, Mr. Larkin, do you swear or affirm that someone you're about to give will be considered lawful?
I do.
Say your full name, please.
Bernard Panzak. It's B-E-R-N-A-R-D, middle initial S, Panzak, P-A-N-Z-A-K.
Bern, can you describe your professional and educational background?
Yes, I have a Bachelor's of Science degree in landscape architecture from Pennsylvania State University. I've been a registered landscape architect in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for 36 years. I've been a principal at our firm, Glack &amp; Thomas Panzak, for 25 years.
And you've put up on the screen Exhibit A-21. Is this a written summary of your educational and professional background?
Yes, it is.
Have you been recognized as an expert witness as a landscape architect before numerous municipal bodies, including zoning hearing boards and governing bodies like the Board of Commissioners?
I have, yes.
I would like to offer Mr. Panzak as an expert in landscape architecture.
Okay. Mr. Marleer?
I have no questions.
No questions. Okay, Mr. Panzak, I'm certainly familiar with Mr. Panzak, and he'll be accepted as a expert witness in landscape architecture. And we have the, we have A-21, right, George?
I can give you a copy if you don't.
Well, you know, the neighbors may want copies, you know, if you can make some available.
Yes, I have that. Would you like me to hand them all out to you all, or? I'll give one to Mr. Marleer.
Yep.
Anybody else want one?
Yep, yep.
Peggy, get it to us for a turn.
Couple more.
I'm good with that one.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Yeah, we'll get it. Peggy will send it out tomorrow.
Mr. Panzak, are you generally familiar with the properties that are the subject of this application, as well as the general area around the properties?
Yes, I am.
Is your firm the landscape architecture firm for the project that is the subject of these proceedings?
Yes, it is.
And did your firm prepare the proposed landscape and lighting plans for the project that are at sheets 10 through 14 of the initial conditional use plan set that are part of Exhibit A-1?
Yes.
And during a prior installment of this hearing, the applicant, through Mr. Lambert, introduced Exhibit A-12, which were the revised conditional use plans. And those plans had a drawing schedule on the first page, and they had Sheets 1 through 12, and Mr. Lambert testified about this at the time, but Sheets 13 through 17 were crossed out in red, meaning that they were not included in A-12. Those sheets are the sheets that your firm has prepared, the landscaping and lighting plans, correct?
Yes, they are.
And did you revise those sheets of your plan set to address, to basically match... to address, to basically match up with Exhibit A-12?
We have, yes.
And are revised plan sets your plan sheets now marked A-22?
Yes, they are. That can be seen on the screen in the lower right-hand corner.
I do have some copies of these that I can hand out as well. We have been also giving all of the exhibits electronically, which we will continue to do.
Were these filed with the application? They were not, right?
These are the revised.
Okay.
So, Mr. Panzak, would you identify these by each sheet, please?
Yes. Exhibit A-22 consists of five sheets. Sheet 13 would be the existing conditions and tree inventory plan. Sheet 14, LP-1, is the landscape plan. Sheet 15 is LP-2, which would be landscape details and notes. Sheet 16 is the lighting plan. And Sheet 17, LI-2, would be lighting details.
And these all have an initial date of 5/18/23? And the last revision of 3/05/24?
That's correct.
Were these plans also revised to address the review memo from the township arborist, John Hosbach? Which review memo has been entered into the record at Exhibit A-9.c?
Yes, it, yes, they have been.
And did you prepare a response memo to A-9.c?
Yes, we did.
And that's what we have marked as Exhibit A-23?
Yes, that's correct.
And that is, and I'll hand out copies of these. This is addressed to John R. Hosbach, H-O-S-B-A-C-H, from you. And it stated 3/05/24, March 5, 2024, correct?
Correct.
So, I want to focus on the landscape plans first. I believe we want to look at Sheet 14 of 17 of Exhibit A-22, which is also Sheet LP-1, is that correct?
That's correct.
And referring to this sheet and other sheets, as you see appropriate, would you describe the proposed landscaping plan for the project?
I would, and something's frozen in my...
Well, I have handed out paper copies, so you can refer to that if you're frozen.
I guess the essentials are still remaining on the, on the PDF. Right. So, this is Exhibit A-22. Sheet 14, which is the landscape plan. And I believe the plan encourages conservation as it takes advantage of this large common open, or central open space to preserve a significant stand of trees on the property. This is one of the most significant pieces of wooded area within that property. Tree preservation is also quite evident along both Eagle Road and Stratford Avenue. The plan, Exhibit A-22, Sheet 13, the tree inventory plan, if I can get back to that, illustrates the limit of disturbance, which I believe Mr. Lambert had described in his testimony. It's a, it's a line, long dash, a couple of short dashes. And then there's also a tree preservation line shown on this plan, which is shown as an X with a long dash. This tree protection line is also detailed on the erosion and sedimentation control plan that was found on Exhibit A-12, Sheet 16 of 17. For those that aren't, may not be aware of the, the tree protection fence in Radnor Township is required to be a six-foot chain link fence. So, when that fence does go in, in advance of, of construction, there's very little ability for contractors to enter into that area. The remainder of the common open space will be landscaped with additional trees and lawn. It will also contain an informal natural pervious path. This has not been completely decided upon. It could be mowed lawn. It could be wood chips or mulch, or something in that vein. Again, a natural pervious path. It is shown to be four feet in width on our plans. And it runs through the central open space. We believe this sizable open space with its open lawn and trail winding through the central wooded area and open space areas will significantly add to resident wellness and enjoyment in this passive recreation area. Referring back to the areas of tree preservation along Stratford Avenue and Eagle Road, we believe we are able to better preserve the existing vegetative character of the community for the residents traveling along the public way. With the density modification option, we feel we can provide a greater degree of tree preservation within that central open space area and along the adjacent streets. This is accomplished by internalizing the design. Along the perimeter streets, our plan limits access points to only two along Stratford Avenue. Continuing at the street frontage, we have added sidewalks to Eagle and Stratford to continue to provide greater local pedestrian connectivity. And now, looking at other property boundaries, with the density modification alternative, a 25-foot buffer is required and provided along all residentially zoned properties that abut our property. This buffer area has been densely landscaped, as you can see on the plan, Exhibit A-22, Sheet 14, LP-1. In addition, we are suggesting the removal and replacement of the existing solid six-foot perimeter fence with a new and improved fencing to strengthen the visual screening along those properties. The rest of the plan is significantly landscaped. And because this will be an HOA, we anticipate landscaping at a high, uniform, and very well-maintained level. Internal driveways have been reviewed with our engineer to include ample space between driveways so that shade trees and flowering trees may be added and included in the street, the driveway area to improve the aesthetics along that vehicular way. Other border and open space areas like Eagle, Eagle Road have, have buffer requirements that have been calculated per the township ordinances and landscaping provided. Likewise, along Eagle Village, certain buffer requirements have been, have been calculated and those areas landscaped as well. In addition, there will be other areas of landscaping that are not included in township requirements, such as foundation landscaping around buildings. But this will be a part of the land development process later in the process. And there may be other high visibility areas that will be amply landscaped, such as entry areas to the property.
Now, Mr. Panzak, you mentioned the relatively large area that you could preserve in the central common open space. The plan does show some tree removal in that area, is that correct?
Yes, there would be some tree removal.
And what, what type of trees are being removed in that area?
Well, in general, there would be invasive or dead diseased or dying trees that would be removed. Those are the, the only types of trees that would be taken out of what would be open space areas at this time.
And those are shown on your tree inventory, which is Sheet 13 of 17, as well as on the, on the plans, the trees that are marked for removal?
Yes.
And we'll get to this in a little bit, but you spoke generally about the landscaping plan. The, the plans have a lot of detail on them about what, what and how many trees and shrubs would be planted and their locations, correct?
That's correct.
And there's a significant amount of trees and shrubs being provided?
I, yes, there are.
In the zoning ordinance, there's a code section 28091.b regarding, regarding common open space. In your CV at Exhibit A-21, it mentioned you had served on an open space board and a shade tree advisory committee. Do your experiences serving on the open space board and the shade tree advisory committee, as well as your years of experience as a landscape architect, give you insight on the common open space being provided with this plan?
Yes, well, the one thing I do understand and realize is that through the density modification option, that, that open space is required and provided. And that in other development options, that large open space will not be there in other development options.
And Section 28091b says "The common space shall be land which is appropriate and in suitable condition for recreation, park site, school grounds, woodland conservation, or other similar recreation or open space purpose." Are you generally familiar with that provision?
Yes, I am.
And do you believe the common open space that is shown on this plan complies with that provision?
I believe it does. We would not be a park site, a school ground, but in terms of woodland conservation, I think this is an exhibit of, of how that's done and how that's realized within this particular development option. We are not constrained in this area by steep slopes or wetlands or anything else. It's a generally flat site. We are providing or suggesting the provision of a, of an open space pathway, a natural path. And this would traverse woodland areas as well as open areas.
So, by not having constraints on the site, you mentioned the lack of constraints and also the, the general flat nature. Is it your professional opinion that this is land that is appropriate and in suitable condition for common open space?
Yes, I do.
And you mentioned woodland conservation. Do you believe it will serve other open space purposes?
Yes. Woodland conservation is, is a valued asset as part of any open space. And we have the, the opportunity to take advantage of that. And I think that will provide the residents of this community a valued asset.
And there are parts of the open space that weren't within the tree protection zone that you mentioned. Is it your professional opinion that all of the open space will provide for open space purpose?
Yes, absolutely. You know, once the, the project is built out, that land will, will be just that, open land. There will be landscaped and pathways provided through that area.
I'd like to turn to Sheet 16 of 17 of A-22, which is also LI-1. Is this the proposed conceptual plan for lighting along the proposed common internal drives within the planned community?
Yes, it is.
And can you describe this plan?
Yeah, this plan shows an array of post lamps, a total of nine, to be exact. Those lamps would be in a mounting height of about 14 feet. They're scheduled to be full cutoff fixtures with houseside shields. They are, we believe, attractive pedestrian scale lamps. We provide zero foot candles at property lines. And I guess, really, the, this is a, a lighting plan that's, that's intent is to provide sort of points of light along the driveway areas. In contrast, it's not an attempt to fully light the, the travelway. We think that there will be residential scale lighting on buildings to round out the community aesthetics in terms of security, lighting in the evening. We've located those lights on the side of the street where the sidewalk is. So, along that driveway, there would be lighting for residents to, to walk and, and operate through the, the course of the evening.
And you mentioned a few terms. I just wanted to clarify for the record. They seem intuitive of what they would mean. But you mentioned a full cutoff fixture. Can you describe what that means?
A full cutoff fixture allows no light to be sent up into the atmosphere. A full cutoff fixture allows no light to be sent up into the atmosphere or up into the sky. So everything is downward cast, and these fixtures would not allow for glare and, you know, to become a nuisance for the residents of this community or the surrounding community. And I guess I would add one other thing, is that these lights are all internal to the community, and, you know, with intervening buildings and landscaping, would further screen any amount of light that was being produced for these post lamps.
And I think you mentioned something about shields. Can you explain what they are?
Yes. A houseside shield is a physical barrier that's placed typically on the back of a light fixture, and in this case, it would be on the back, which would fully cut off any amount of light that would be flowing from that light source in a direction of our units. They're in, you know, relatively close proximity along the sidewalk, in front of some of the units, and, you know, we would not want to create, as I said before, a nuisance with the light being projected backward.
And will any of the lights proposed along the internal common driveway shine directly into habitable dwelling windows located inside or outside of the development?
They will not. As, you know, as I just described, the houseside shields will cut that off. They are full cutoff fixtures, and again, being internal to the site, relatively low pedestrian-scale mounting height. And I guess the other, you know, thing to mention about the lighting is that it's a warmer light, more of an incandescent type of, they call it color temperature. So it's more leans to the incandescent as opposed to the bright white light.
And the details, you've mentioned some of the details of these light posts, the height and some of the specifications. Are they shown on Sheet 17 of 17, also referred to as LI-2 on Exhibit A22?
Yes, they are.
You mentioned a term, foot candles, and your plan on Exhibit, Sheet 16 of A22 has a series of very small numbers all throughout the plan. Are they foot candle measurements?
They are foot candle measurements.
And without going just generally, is that a measure of light?
Yeah, it's a measurement of light intensity as it hits the ground surface.
And does this show that there's zero foot candles at the property lines for the property, particularly along the properties that are front on Grant Lane?
Yes, absolutely. Zero foot candles at that point, yeah.
So is it fair to say that that means that the lights you're proposing would not be shining into the homes of those properties?
They would not.
I want to ask you a general question about all of your plan sheets. We first talked about landscaping, and then we talked about lighting, but I'm asking you generally about all of the plan sheets. In the general conditional use submission requirements, a code sections 280, 135(c) and F2, and Mr. Lambert referred to this several times, references a general site plan being submitted. It is not intended that such a plan be engineered or contain a fixed architectural layout such as would be required under Chapter 255 subdivision of land. The plan shall demonstrate compliance with applicable standards of approval for the conditional use, including those in F below. And F says that in addition to the generalized site plan, the plan should show the applicant's intentions with regard to the following, and two is location, approximate dimension, and arrangements of areas devoted to ground cover trees, screening, buffering, other planting, open space, recreation, and similar purposes as applicable. In your professional opinion, do the plans meet and exceed these requirements?
Yes, the plans are almost all fully engineered and designed in a way that would be appropriate for a land development submission. We've provided subdivision of land development, tree requirement, coordination. We've also added the tree replacement requirements of Chapter 263, the Tree Code, so, you know, all of our replacement trees are coordinated and identified in chart form on Exhibit A22, Sheet 13, EX1, the inventory plan, tree inventory plan.
And in code Section 280, 135g.2f and I, there's a reference to conceptual landscaping plans. Is that correct?
That's correct. These are well-developed beyond conceptual.
So Section G2F says that the conceptual landscape plan should show locations of trees and shrubs and other landscape improvements. These plans show all those details, correct?
Yes, they do. Trees, shrubs, fencing, natural pervious path, all at a preliminary plan level for both the landscape plan and the lighting plan.
And it also indicates that improvements to the streetscape adjacent to the property boundaries should be provided for. Your plans address the streetscape of Strafford Avenue and Eagle Road along the property boundaries, correct?
Yes, they do. We provide, as I mentioned earlier, sidewalks for connectivity, pedestrian safety. In some of those cases, there are retaining walls that are required to add that sidewalk. We've added street trees along Eagle. Along Strafford, there is a significant amount of preserved trees, and generally speaking, the existing trees do satisfy the street tree requirements along Strafford.
And I just remembered one thing I forgot to ask you about lighting. Is there some existing street lighting, I presume they're township streetlights, along Strafford Avenue in the vicinity of the property?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly whose responsibility those lights are, but there are, we observed four streetlights along Strafford Avenue and no lighting along Eagle Road. Those are, those light locations are shown on the lighting plan with an asterix. So directly across from one of our driveway entry points is a street light, township or state maintained. And then another one across from the other driveway entry point. There's one in between, as you can see where my mouse is there, and then there's another streetlight at the corner of Eagle and Strafford.
And for the record, you were referring to Exhibit A22, Sheet 16 of 17, LI-1?
That's correct.
Jumping back to a landscaping question.
If I could just make one additional comment regarding the last question. The foot candle points that are shown on the lighting plan do not take into account the streetlights that are along Strafford, so just for clarity.
Yeah, and for clarity, the foot candle measurements you did were to address the lights that were shown on your proposed plan that the applicant is proposing, correct?
That's correct.
Code Section 28091.g. discusses a required buffer. Can you review that provision and describe how the plans comply with that provision?
Yeah, code Section 28091.g. states, "There shall be a buffer of 25 feet along all property lines which abut residentially zoned districts, which shall not contain any roads, structures, parking areas, et cetera, and shall be planted in accordance with a plan which shall be approved by the Board of Commissioners at the time of final approval." As previously described, we've got 25-foot buffers along our residential adjacent properties, along Grant Lane to the left or west, and along the Forest Lane property that drops below the main rectangle of the site, comes up the other side, and is terminated at the residential property at the interface of Eagle Village.
And the plans show the planting that's proposed in these buffer areas?
That's correct.
There's a code Section 28095.a.4. Would you review that provision and describe how the plans comply?
Yes, 280-95.a.4. "Landscaping shall be regarded as an essential to every development plan. Not only must natural features, trees, and slopes of the site be preserved, but careful attention must be given to landscaping of parking areas and providing for street trees." As shown on Exhibit A22, Sheet 14 of 17, Sheet LP1, we fully landscaped the entire property with particular intensity around the site boundaries, particularly along the residentially zoned districts, as mentioned previously. We've gone over the areas of tree preservation in the central open space and along Strafford and Eagle Roads. We've worked with our design engineer to allow for ample space along our internal drives for shade trees, and there are no other natural features or natural slopes that would need to be addressed in this case.
And there's a code Section 28095.a.5. Would you review that provision and describe how the plans comply with that provision?
Yes, 28095.a.5 requires seeding or sodding on other, and other planting shall be applied to stabilize topsoil on steep slopes and to enhance the appearance of open areas. There are some very limited slopes that were manmade when Eagle Road was created. There will be stabilization through the use of ground cover and/or sod or seed along those areas. The pervious portions of the site will also include seeding or sodding as we determine through the course of the land development process. There will also be other landscape beds, as I mentioned, at foundation areas and entry areas. There will be likely bedded areas under the density of buffer trees and shrubs that are arrayed around the perimeter. And all of these things would be there to stabilize the slopes and topsoil and any exposed areas through the construction. There are seeding notes listed on the construction stage 11 and 12 on Sheet 6 of 17 of Exhibit A12, which is the Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan, and Sheet 9 of Exhibit A12, which is the ENS Detail.
The conditional use standards did not require this, as we went over, but do these plans show compliance with the township tree replacement and planting requirements outside of the zoning ordinance that are found in other chapters of the code, including Chapter 263 Trees and Chapter 255, the subdivision and land development ordinance?
Yes, as my previous testimony stated, all required plantings are shown on these plans and are compiled on compliance charts on Sheets 13 of Exhibit A22, the tree inventory plan, as well as Sheet 14, landscape plan. All of our calculations and ordinance requirements are summarized on those plans. Yeah.
And in your experience, are the landscaping plans and compliance with these requirements in Radnor Township done typically during land development or at the time of grading permit?
Yes, they are.
And at that time, are these plans reviewed by the Township Shade Tree Commission?
Yes, they are, yes.
And in your professional experience, working with the Shade Tree Commission and Radnor Township, I'm a township arborist. Are you typically able to work out any particular concerns or issues regarding landscaping, tree removal, and tree replacement at that time?
Yes, I've found that to be a very open and interactive process, typically that involves a site visit, where we literally walk out and look at the site and assess our plans versus what's on the site, and we do work out the details sometimes at that point.
You mentioned that one of the objectives of the landscaping plan for the site was to maintain the character of the existing street frontage of the property along Eagle Road and Strafford Avenue. You described generally how the plans achieve those objectives and other objectives. Did you, your firm, prepare some images to show the existing and proposed views of the property along Eagle Road and Strafford Avenue?
We did. We felt it was important to show what the edges of the property would look like from the public traveled way, and if our computer is cooperative.
I'm gonna hand up, and we're gonna, are these images at A24?
Exhibit A24, A through E. Exhibit A24, A through E.
We're gonna take a moment to see if it can be revived on the screen, if that's okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks for the chance to put that back up. By reference to these exhibits, Mr. Panzak, would you describe the existing and proposed conditions along the property frontage along Eagle Road and Strafford Avenue?
What we have on the screen is Exhibit A24, and we start with A24A. There's a small key map, which I'm sure you're all familiar with by now, and we are starting on Eagle Road near Eagle Village, and we're going to make our way up Eagle Road toward the intersection of Strafford Avenue. We will then turn left and work our way, I guess, northward or westward along Strafford Avenue, and I will describe the existing condition and the proposed condition, and each of these exhibits has just that. The top section is the existing condition, and then we've tried to, to the best of our ability, show an artist rendition of what we believe the condition will look like, perhaps shortly after it would be planted. So, current condition along Eagle, starting at...
You're at A24A?
A24A, starting at Eagle Village. This is the existing condition. There's some fencing. You can see the slopes that rise up from Eagle Road to the top of the embankment. There is currently an entry/exit point to this property, a gated entry/exit point, and you can also see the existing trees that are there currently. And the thing that you can't see real well, right at the entry point, there are stone entry walls on either side of that driveway that are covered in ivy, and if we switch down to the proposed condition, we will be, as I mentioned earlier, adding some retaining walls to be able to add the sidewalks that have been so critical to the pedestrian connectivity in the area. So you're seeing a retaining wall along the street line. You're also seeing that sidewalk. We've got some human forms shown there that would indicate walkers along that sidewalk. You're looking at street trees and also replacement trees that make up the streetscape. There would be several removals of existing trees in this area. I know that this tree has demised in the course of our project.
Which tree are you referring to and which part of the exhibit?
Yeah, it's a central tree on the property behind the existing fence that is located on the existing streetscape photograph.
Would it be the third tree from the left of the existing driveway?
Third or fourth, depending on what we've got there. Yeah. So, you know, to further describe what you're seeing, there would be townhouse units. This would be the end of a townhouse unit. Our driveways are intervening between this townhouse unit and the next one you begin to see.
When you're saying this townhouse unit, can you be more descriptive for the record?
Yes. This would be Townhouse Unit Number One, as shown on all of our plans. The open space in between, moving to the north, again, would be driveways and open space in this area. And then there is another townhouse unit, which I believe is Townhouse 38. So we're showing Townhouse 38 in this exhibit.
And for the record, on this particular A24A, on the left side of each image, existing and proposed, would be where the Eagle Village Shopping Center is?
Yes, that's correct.
And to the right side is headed toward the intersection of Eagle Road and Strafford Avenue?
That's correct.
Thank you.
The right side of this exhibit is about mid-block between Eagle Village driveway and Strafford Avenue. So, starting where we left off, the existing condition, you see...
You're on A24B now?
A24B. You're seeing the existing condition again on the top graphic. There is a fence also in this exhibit. It's a four-foot estate fence at this location. There are a variety of shrubs and, of course, trees that make up this streetscape area. You're also, if we move down to the proposed condition, you're again seeing the townhouse unit that goes from thirty, Unit 38, to Unit 33, closest to Strafford Avenue. There are a variety of existing trees that would remain. Again, we made assessments in the field as to trees that would be dead, diseased, or dying, and we've attempted to, to the best of our ability, to remove certain features that we know would be removed, and we are showing trees that we believe would be preserved along these areas. Again, including the sidewalk along that side of Eagle and its associated retaining walls, and also the array of landscaping, both shade trees, flowering trees, and evergreen trees, along with upgraded estate fencing to round out the streetscape. And, you know, just to reiterate, the right side of this exhibit, both existing and proposed, would be Strafford Avenue. So, moving on to Exhibit A24C, the very left side of both of these exhibits would be looking southwestward along Eagle Road. So, the left side is the Eagle Road and Strafford Avenue intersection, and reviewing the existing conditions at that point, several many large trees and fencing, no sidewalk shown. Probably should have mentioned that on the existing condition of the previous exhibits, but there are no sidewalks currently, and, you know, this is one of the entry points or entry driveways, so you see how that would open up at that point. And what you're looking at on the proposed piece of A24C, as we move to the center of this exhibit, is the previously mentioned Townhouse Unit 33, the end of that unit. And then, you know, we go across the driveway, and then you're starting to see what we believe would be the condition of Townhouse, the end of Townhouse Unit 32. So, our driveway, continuation of the sidewalk, how we are dealing with the existing streetscape from a landscape standpoint, preservation of trees where possible, and then the supplement of new proposed replacement or buffer screening trees along the perimeter. Moving on to A24D, this is the central section of three sections along Strafford Avenue, and what we're looking at on the existing condition is a very, is a relatively densely populated streetscape of existing trees. This is our main open space area, and we are really proposing that very few trees in this area are removed. Again, as previously stated, only trees that would be compromised, diseased or dying trees, would be eliminated from this streetscape area, and, again, supplemental trees provided where needed, to the extent possible, within the context of the existing trees to remain. So, you know, we believe that the vast majority of this section will remain very much like it is perceived today. And our last exhibit, streetscape exhibit along Strafford Avenue, is A24E. This is the furthest western or northwestern exhibit section. Again, the top band is presenting the existing condition, which shows an array of existing trees. This is where the driveway, the existing driveway is to the previous home site that was located on the property. And to the right side of this exhibit, you will notice a large tree with a bit of a bend to it. Right in that area is where the end of the property line is. So, we're actually depicting a very small piece of the adjacent neighboring property at that point. So if we move down to the proposed condition, again, we're looking at this elevation area where our second driveway meets Strafford Avenue, and we are looking at... This would be Townhouse Unit Number 21 in this location, and then our entry area, and then Townhouse Unit Number 20 on the right side of this driveway. And as previously described, we are proposing to retain as much of that street, the healthy streetscape trees as possible, and then where the intervening driveway regrading and disturbance would happen, we would be adding our driveway trees and, you know, any additional supplemental landscaping that would present this as, you know, a beautified streetscape area.
Thank you. Mr. Panzak, in your professional opinion, do the features of the landscaping plan and lighting plan that you have focused on, and with regard to the landscaping plan, including extensive plantings, the large common open space, the buffers, maintaining the character of the streetscape along Eagle and Strafford Avenue, help to mitigate adverse impacts on the surrounding properties and neighborhood?
I believe it does, yes.
In your professional opinion, will the proposed use have any adverse impacts that would not, related to impact on landscaping and lighting that would not normally be associated with a similar townhome development?
They would not.
That's all I have for Mr. Panzak at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Rice, if I could just have five minutes like Mr. Rosen had, just to set up some exhibits?
Okay. Thank you.
Is that the general one?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you need anything?
You wanna eject it, or are you...
I'm just pulling.
All right.
Yeah.
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 The Sixers, down 12.
Ooh.
Ooh.
I guess you're gonna need this back.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Then you don't walk away.
Okay. Was I doing okay?
Yes.
Okay. My voice projects pretty well.
I think it'll...
What?
What?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Panzak, you testified that with other options, not the proposal, but other options that are in the code, that the large open space would not be there, I believe is how you testified. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Just to be clear, it might not be required, but this property can be developed with a large open space with potentially a smaller amount of single homes, correct? Single-family homes?
Yes, I was mainly thinking about the exhibit that was presented previously as the single-family plan.
You're referring to the plan that the developer put together, the one sheet showing a potential single-family home development, correct?
Yes.
If we could just talk about the lighting, I'm gonna try not to skip around too much here, but if we could talk about the lighting for just a moment. So if we could look at A 22, I believe it's Sheet 16?
Yes, that's the lighting plan.
You talked about the light posts and the light that they would cast out, and I believe you said there was some sort of shield to keep, I think you said house-side shields?
Yes.
Correct. If we could just look at Townhome 17, for example, between 17 and 16, there is a lamp post in front of that, correct? That triangle is showing the lamp post?
Yes.
So the house-side shield would keep the light going from Townhome 17 and 16, correct?
Yes.
Would the light go into Townhome 24, which is directly across?
No, it wouldn't.
Why is that?
I could have described it earlier during testimony, on that same sheet, Sheet 16 of Exhibit A 22, there's a graphic called an ISO foot candle diagram in the lower right-hand side of the page. And that shows the distribution of foot candle, light distribution. And we've superimposed that footprint on the plan, as well as run this point-to-point foot candle array that you see in the small pinpoint locations across that Sheet 16. And that's where you begin to understand the limits of the throw of the light.
So when you say house-side shield, it's not just the house side, is there a shield in the front of the light? How does that work? Why does it not get to Townhome 24?
Yeah, it's just the internal optics that are utilized in lamp posts. There, in the lighting world, there are many different shapes of these footprints. There's a, you know, a full symmetrical array, there's a, what's called a forward throw, which projects light even further across a parking lot or a roadway. In this case, we've selected a, an optical package that really is limited and throws light side to side, and not forward. And then the house-side shield is also mitigating any light trespass to the rear.
Understood. So I assume the house-side shield was what was keeping the light, but there were other factors, is your testimony?
Correct.
Okay. You mentioned that much of the tree replacement requirements would be addressed or could be addressed in land development, and you've gone, it's your testimony that you've exceeded the requirements, right?
Yes.
And you, but you did point out that a lot of this would be fleshed out in land development, correct?
Yes.
But just to be clear, if there were health, safety, and welfare concerns, let's say about stormwater runoff, that those health, safety, and welfare concerns would be important in a conditional use here, correct? You know, Jack, it's a legal question. I think Mr. Rosen...
Overruled. Could you restate the question, please?
Sure. You stated that there is, that some of the issues regarding landscaping would be fleshed out during land development. But my question is, if there were concerns about health, safety, and welfare with this development regarding stormwater runoff, you would agree that that would be important to discuss during conditional use hearing, correct?
I believe that was information that Mr. Lambert has commented on, and I'm not really qualified to state whether removal of trees and stormwater management would be affected here.
You've been qualified as an expert in landscape architecture, but you don't, you don't have, you don't believe you're qualified to testify as to whether the removal of trees and the impact on stormwater management? Is that your testimony?
Yeah, I don't believe that I'm qualified to comment on stormwater management relative to removal of trees. I think there are provisions that are in place on the engineering documents that will protect health, safety, welfare issues during construction, and I would rely on that information.
Let me just ask a very general question, or a very basic question, I think. Landscaping can have an effect on stormwater management, correct?
I believe that landscaping and trees are renewable resource that can be and are constantly refreshed. New trees today can become the canopy of the future. And, you know, I think construction activities are a relatively small moment in time, and stabilization will happen, new trees will be planted, trees have been preserved, and, you know, I think this ecosystem will move forward in a more healthy way with this development versus where we are today with the condition of the tree canopy.
I'm not saying that this development is going to take away all the trees, but let's just say this development was going to take away every single tree on this property. You would agree with me that that would have an impact on stormwater management, correct? Relative to where it is today with the amount of trees it has. Is Mr. Marlier, you're assuming no new trees will be planted in your hypothetical? Correct. No new trees, all the trees are taken away, relative to where it is right now, there would be an effect on stormwater management, correct? Okay. So we agree that landscaping does have some impact, and we don't, we don't know what, we're trying to flesh out, and this board's trying to figure out what that impact might be, based on this plan, but there is some impact from landscaping on stormwater management, correct?
Yes, in that hypothetical where we're removing trees and nothing's going back, but we know that there's an ample replacement package, additional trees for driveways and buffers, and, you know, this is not a static, one-time effect. It's a, it's a, it's an opportunity that will be built out and restabilized. And again, as I stated earlier, multiple trees replacing ones that have been removed, this would all be township-required calculations, and a significant amount of replacement trees will be added to the property.
I'd like to direct your attention to A 24 again, C, and also on E, it shows the two drives that are proposed, correct? So looking at 24C and 24E, the renderings for the proposed show the drives that are proposed by the applicant, correct? 24C and E.
Yeah. Yep, yes, correct.
Just to be clear, are these, these drives aren't to scale, correct?
Yeah, as I stated earlier, we did our best to, you know, provide a rendering and an artist depiction of what this might look like, and exact scale is, you know, within reason, but, you know, it was not calculated or engineered significantly.
I'd like to go back to the landscaping. How many trees are going to be removed from the property? And unhealthy trees? I'm not sure, are you, are you reading?
Yeah, there's a total, total of 225 trees to be removed, which would include 115 healthy trees and... 225 trees total, 115 healthy, 110 declined, and diseased trees.
And how many will be planted?
Total trees proposed would be 332.
And what will the maturity of these trees be?
We've got 186 deciduous trees. Of that 186, 142 are large canopy trees, 44 would be flowering understory trees, and 146 trees would be... 146 trees would be evergreen tree varieties, larger evergreen tree varieties.
And what would the height of the evergreens be, roughly?
At planting, the township requirement is eight to 10 feet.
And your testimony is they would be that eight to 10 feet?
Yes.
And the large canopy trees?
The large canopy trees, the township requires a caliper inch sizing, and these would be installed at a two to two and a half inch caliper size.
Mr. Panzak, I don't know what a caliper size is. Can you explain that?
Yeah. Caliper is the measurement of the diameter of the trunk at the root ball height. The industry talks about diameter at breast height. The nursery industry sizes their trees just above the root flare at the root ball. So a two and a, two to two and a half inch caliper tree is the measurement of the trunk size above the root ball.
You've testified that you, I believe that you are removing as few trees as possible, correct?
Yes.
I'm going to object. I think it was along the street frontages he testified.
So what's, what's the objection?
I think he didn't state the question, state the testimony accurately.
I think that's proper for redirect. I think it'd be clarified.
Go ahead, Mr. Marlier.
Just going to bring up what's been previously marked as A4A. Mr. Panzak, are you familiar with this document? This is, I believe we've been calling it the Neighbor Plan.
I've seen this plan. It hasn't been a plan that I've studied or prepared any critical landscape assessment on.
Well, looking at A4A, you can see on the left-hand side, along the Grant Lane side, there's more, there's more buffering on that side than in the plan that's before this commission board right now, correct?
Correct.
And so in that buffering area, as a landscape architect, you could utilize that buffering area to put more plantings in, correct? Because there's more space.
Yes.
So there's a plan that has been submitted by the applicant himself that shows that there could be more buffering along the Grant Lane side.
Yes, correct.
And just to be clear, you balanced the preserving of trees with the applicant's desire to have 38 townhomes, correct?
Yes.
And you balanced preserving trees with the developer's desire to include stormwater management programs under the open space, correct?
Yes.
So I think you testified to this, but I just want to be clear for the record. What else is going to be along the buffers besides the trees? You mentioned fencing?
Along the Grant Lane neighbors, the Forest Lane neighbors, and along our boundary with Eagle Village, there would be a solid six-foot fence provided.
The new trees being put in, we just talked about the height, they would be the height of the new trees proposed. That would be shorter than many of the trees you're taking down, correct?
Yes.
And obviously, trees that are newer and newly planted, they wouldn't be as full as trees that have been growing or are currently on the property, correct?
Well, not necessarily. Sometimes, and we see it with white pine trees, of which there are many along the property border, lose their lower branches and become very open at the, at the ground plane. So essentially, what was once a buffer tree is no longer really providing that, that buffer.
Understood. Have you reviewed the township's comprehensive plan?
I have not.
Did you know that the township code states that to accomplish the township's land use objectives within the density modification development, conditional use, development plans shall be reviewed in conjunction with the municipal comprehensive plan? You didn't know that?
I'm going to object. He didn't say he didn't know that.
That's my question. You didn't know that.
I've understood that that is the case, that it is being, that, that it does need to relate to the comprehensive plan.
Has your plan indicated all the trees with a diameter at breast, and we were just touching on this a few moments ago, height of 30 feet or greater?
I don't understand that question.
Have you marked all the heritage trees at this site?
We know where all the heritage trees are, yeah.
Do you know how many there are off the top of your head?
There are 30 heritage trees.
And are all of those trees being preserved?
They are not.
How many are being taken down?
Of that 22, 15 of those trees have been determined to be declined or diseased. Seven trees, heritage trees, have been determined to be healthy, that we were taking down, and eight trees are being preserved.
I guess if we were going to look at where those seven healthy heritage trees would be, let's go to your exhibit 822, sheet 13, please. Are you able to point out where those seven heritage trees are, the healthy ones?
With some time, I could.
Okay. Let me, let me ask you this. Are those heritage trees where the townhomes will be built? Is that why they're being taken down?
You're asking where the, the preserved trees are, or the ones that are being taken down?
The, you were discussing seven healthy trees, heritage trees, that are going to be taken down. And I couldn't fathom why you would take down a heritage tree that's healthy if it's in grain space or, you know, the, the open space that's indicated in the development plans. So is it safe to assume that those seven heritage trees would be where the townhomes are proposed to be built?
They're arrayed, yeah, across the site where townhomes would be, or grading, or, you know, some other development activity.
If you had a townhome development proposal that was less than 38 townhomes, then theoretically we could save those seven heritage trees, heritage trees, correct?
Yeah, and as I've stated earlier, I think we're, we're able to remove trees if approved, and with compensation that's called out in the ordinance, the canopy restoration would take place, I believe, over time, and build back any losses that would be incurred by these, these trees you're referring to.
How long would it take the large canopy trees that are going to be planted to grow to the size of a heritage tree?
It could take 50, 60 years.
And how long for the evergreens that are going to be planted?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question.
There's 146 evergreens that are going to be eight to 10 feet tall. How long would it take for them to be the size of these seven heritage trees that are being removed?
I don't understand the relationship between heritage tree and evergreen tree.
Well, heritage tree has to do with the size of the root, correct? The size of the, of the trunk.
Correct.
So I'm not the landscape architect, but I would assume the size of the, the trunk at the root level. If it's a heritage tree, it's, it's a certain width, it's large, it's mature, and the 146 evergreens that are going to be planted would not be that, correct?
Correct.
So how long would it take for those 146 evergreens to become that?
Well, again, you know, depending on growth rate, you know, that might take place in 30, 40 years.
Is all the landscaping shown relative on, on the documents that you put into the record tonight, or marked at least? Are they relative to, is there any, anything on those plans that show the, how close they are, the proximity to utilities, underground utilities?
I believe we show the, the utility easements, and we are outside of those The township actually dictates setbacks of landscaping and other structures from underground stormwater management, so that's also a, a control, and we've complied with, with those controls.
You were, Mr. Panzak, a witness in what has been called Hamilton 1, correct?
Yes.
Does the current plan that's before this board right now conserve more trees than that plan, or less?
I haven't reviewed Hamilton 1 in some time, so I am not able to comment on that.
Mr. Marlier, just while you're looking, I just, question about the, the DBH versus the measurement at the root ball.
Yeah.
Okay. So the diameter of breast height, that measurement of a tree, what are we talking about in terms of the, the seven heritage trees? What is the size that we're talking about removing?
Well, the heritage tree designation starts at 30 inches, so...
But what, what are the seven being removed? Is it 30?
Oh.
Is it 40?
Oh.
Is it 50?
Oh.
Just want to get a, a number.
Right. I've got a 32, I've got a 41, got a 33, a 32, a 35 and a half, 31, and a 46 and a half.
Okay. And are they shade trees or ornamental trees, or are they evergreens?
Primarily shade deciduous trees. I've got a black cherry, a pin oak, a red oak, another red oak, red oak, red oak, sugar maple, and one white pine.
Okay. And just one other question about trees. So, get back to Mr. Marlier. Norway maples, are they all staying? Because there's a lot of them on your chart, which say they're invasive slash volunteers. Are they staying, or are they being removed?
Only the, the items with the dark shading at the number would be removed.
Oh, okay. Okay. You're talking about the tree inventory chart.
That's correct. On exhibit 822, sheet 13.
Got it. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Marlier, go ahead.
No, thank you, Mr. Rice. I was just asking about the underground utilities. So if you look down at Forest, to the property that juts off, kind of juts off in the rectangle, you have the, the basin, I think it's basin five. It's your testimony that the landscaping to the left and right of that basin is sufficiently far away, per the code?
Yes.
And it's your testimony that there won't be any, you're not concerned with any influx or infiltration, I and I, with the stormwater management that's under there, leading into Forest Lane?
Yeah, we've kept the, the adjacent vegetation outside of the, the setback buffers.
Brought up on the screen, A12, sheet 5, and the dotted line, I think you testified to this, that shows the, the limit of earth disturbance, correct?
Yes.
And so, just so I understand what that means, within the dotted line in the open space, there wouldn't, the testimony is there would not be earth disturbance? Is that correct?
Well, outside that line, inside would be disturbed, outside would not be disturbed.
So just to be clear about what's inside and outside. So outside is along the townhomes, not in the middle, in the, in the open space, but, but to the, to the other side of the dotted lines, closest to the townhomes.
Well, in the center open space area, where you do see that large dashed, long dash line, inside of, well, yeah, inside of that area is preservation, is not disturbed. There are two different things. One is not shown here, which is the tree preservation fence. There, there are pieces of, of area outside of the limit of disturbance line that are not included in the tree preservation area. So you will have areas that have no impact on trees, even though there's no disturbance there, so...
Well, let me, let me try to clarify for, for myself.
Okay.
And for the record. So you have the open space.
Yes.
And you have a dotted line with, that's kind of has the two little circles along it as well, and it kind of wraps around through the open space around the townhomes, like a U.
Yes.
What is that indicating?
May I use the mouse?
Sure.
This area...
This area is, is not part of the limit of disturbance. There, there is significant tree preservation in this area. If you cross this line around the townhomes and around the driveways, there is disturbance. That line that we've been referring to works its way around the site. You can see it, if you can see where my mouse is at this point, that, the, on the townhome side of that line is, is disturbed land. In this case, there is a tree protection fence preserving these trees. That's the six-foot fence, chain link fence that the township requires that I mentioned earlier. So everything in here would be off limits to construction and contractors and machinery. That line works its way around the property. It's very narrow here, so there is some area of non-disturbance. A little piece here, a little piece there, and you can see it works its way around. So generally speaking, there is disturbance along the Eagle Village side, and that line works its way up and around.
Thank you. So in other words, we're looking, what you've just been describing is a, is a dotted line that is kind of solid in some places, circles in others.
Yeah.
And it wraps around the property, but specifically in the open space, it wraps around like a U, correct?
Yes.
Or a cow's face, I don't know. But inside that, your testimony is that there won't be earth disturbance?
That's correct.
Are there going to be trees removed inside that?
Yes, only the unhealthy, diseased, or dying trees.
Will there be trees planted in that, inside that, that shape, that, that U?
Yes, there would be.
And it's your testimony that, that removing those trees and planting trees does not qualify earth disturbance?
Well, digging a hole and planting a tree, I don't consider that earth disturbance because we're planting it and we're, you know, mulching it, and, you know, that's not what I would define as earth disturbance. Earth disturbance is really the limit of grading... Earth disturbance is really the limit of grading and construction, and that's what that line is intended to depict. I've never had any challenge of tree planting within a, uh, limit of disturbance outside of the, the technical, uh, machine regrading and, and construction area.
Have you spoken with the Delaware County Conservation District about this project generally?
Uh, no, I have not. That's not typical for landscape architects.
Just going to remain on A 12, and I'll go back to Sheet 3. This shows the existing features. These existing features are going to be removed, correct?
Sheet 3?
Correct.
Yes.
And when we were just looking at the earth disturbance, uh, the sheet that shows the earth disturbance and the limits of the same, are any of these features within the area that showed there would not be disturbance?
It's hard to tell without the superimposing of, uh, of these features on the, or having the limited disturbance shown on this plan.
So, your, your testimony is you're not sure? You can't tell from just looking at these two sheets?
Yeah, I, I cannot tell.
Will there be, strike that. You did testify that there will be trees planted along Grant Lane, correct? The Grant Lane properties, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Like to switch over to lighting, if I could. Are you installing metal or fiberglass pole streetlights? And I know that, that some of this, you testified to potentially, and it was introduced just this evening, but we did just receive these this evening, so I just want to clarify.
Yeah, the specified lights are metallic lamps.
Metallic lamps, so not fiberglass?
No.
And will they have underground conduits?
Yes.
Will there be any lighting closer to the property line along Grant Lane or Eagle?
There would not be any additional landscape, or lighting rather, um, along those areas that you just mentioned.
If there were, if this project was 32 townhomes, let's say instead of 38, there would be less light emanating from this property, correct? Less, less need for, for as much lighting?
Fixtures that would be associated with dwelling units are typically quite small and inconspicuous. And I would not consider that level of lighting to be problematic or disturbing of, of surrounding neighborhoods.
So, is your testimony that would be the same amount of street lamps or street posts, light posts, if the property was developed with 32 townhomes or less?
If the driveway was of a similar size, I would think that we would have these nine, um, street lamp posts there.
So, the lighting is, is, is it your testimony, the lighting is, is what it is as proposed because of the length of the driveway? Drive A and Drive B?
I, I think I stated earlier in testimony that our intention was not to fully light the, the driveway, but rather provide points of light along it. You know, we could have reduced this number of, of lights. We, we felt like this was the, um, appropriate amount of light, given its location and the type of development it is.
If this were, this board were to determine that Drive A and Drive B were in fact streets and should be held to that standard, would the lighting be sufficient? Per the code?
I think so, yes.
You testified that you, you, you are familiar with Hamilton 1. I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but if you can, please. Does the current plan have less light on the property than that plan?
As I said, I haven't looked at Hamilton 1 in a while and don't know the exact number of lamp posts that we used on that particular plan.
Would there be any lighting proposed along Eagle Road?
There's no lamp post provided at this time and none anticipated.
And the same for Strafford? It's just the, the two posts that are indicated towards Strafford Avenue, but none along Strafford Avenue, correct?
Correct.
And what tests have you done to determine what, what light would leave the property, if any?
Not sure I understand the question.
Have you done any tests to determine what light would emanate from the, the property as the development is proposed, let's say into the neighbor's property on Grant Lane?
Yes, the point-to-point, uh, diagram that's shown on Exhibit A 22, Sheet 16, it's very hard to read, but nevertheless, it's there showing foot candle levels at each one of those points, and, uh, we believe that there are zeros at the property line.
And how do you determine that foot candle? You may have testified to this, but briefly, how do, how do you determine that foot candle?
There's a, a visual software, a software called Visual, and the, um, each fixture has a, um, a file associated with it, and you give it an attribute, which would be the type of fixture that you're using, the exact fixture that you're using, and at what mounting height. And once you've added all of that information into the program, you can ask it for these, uh, these points, and that's what is shown on LI 1, Sheet 16 of A 22.
Thank you, Mr. Panzak. I have no further questions, Mr. Rice.
Neighbor question. Amber Levy.
Amber Atwood Levy, Radnor Conservancy. Make sure I don't get rid of our image here. Okay. I just wanted to, talking about lamp post real quick, um, do you know, are these full cut-off lamp posts, are they dark sky friendly?
Yes.
Great. And you had mentioned that there's additional housing lighting, safety lighting. Would that also be dark sky friendly?
Not having, you know, developed an architectural package, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Could they be?
I certainly think they could be.
Okay. What is the qualification that was used to define decline? We reference a lot of trees in decline. What, how do we define that? Is it like an ISA track usage, the tree risk assessment qualification that's used?
Well, I'm going to describe that we had brought onto our team an arborist to make these assessments, and, um, that's the individual that has made the assignments of declined or diseased. I'm not aware of a specific tracks or other criteria.
Okay.
That was part of that assessment.
Got it. And what percentage of this landscape design includes trees that are native to southeastern Pennsylvania?
Almost, well, almost all of it in the deciduous realm would be considered native. In the landscape architectural world, we, we have trouble with native evergreens, and we oftentimes use, uh, other trees that have proven to be good performers, not invasive, and, uh, would avoid things like I described earlier with white pines where, you know, the intent of buffering is lost over time. So, um, you know, less of a percentage of natives on the evergreen side.
Yeah, no, I understand. Those, uh, white pines like to just fall apart. What about the shrubs? What percentage of the shrubs are native to southeastern Pennsylvania?
Those particular shrubs are not native, and again, um, we see, uh, ill performance of native shrub materials, evergreen shrubs particularly, and not, not the deciduous side, but where evergreens are required. You know, our rhododendrons and our mountain laurels oftentimes are just not robust performers, and we believe that, uh, there are other shrubs that do perform much better in terms of providing screening, more robust growth, faster growth than, than some of our natives.
Okay. What is the, and forgive me if this is just something that people know, and I'm being new, just don't know this, but what is the manner in which topsoil is preserved in the areas of disturbance to kind of protect that bioculture of the topsoil that's in existence right there and those microorganisms?
Well, in the areas of disturbance, it's a general requirement that topsoil be stripped and stockpiled on-site, and that once the, um, construction activity is concluded, that soil would be respread on the pervious, remaining pervious areas of the site to provide a, a growing medium for sod and seed and other landscape plants.
Got it. And is that amended once it's put with like compost or anything like that when it's added in case there is more that is needed, when it goes back onto the property?
Yeah, typically not amended. You know, we believe that, you know, and that the topsoil that's in place, um, provides a reasonably good, um, growing medium, and, and that's typically what's, what's respread across the site without amendment.
Got it. How far away is the tree protection fence set from the trees?
I would say that varies, and, um, in some cases, uh, would be within drip lines and other cases would be at the drip line area.
And is, is it your opinion that that is far enough back from the drip line of those mature trees to preserve enough of the root structure for those trees to not have a negative impact or create any dieback on those large trees that are close to that fence line?
I think we've tried very hard to make assessments and to, um, consider the trees that are there, and, um, in terms of doing the best we can, we, we've made decisions of what we made, and we believe that, you know, where we're at is, uh, within reason to save these trees.
Okay. And my final question, uh, what is the size of the tree protection space within the open space? I believe it's my understanding that it's about an acre of open space on this plan. How much of that is this preserved conservation space, as you're calling it?
Yeah, I don't have that, that number. I've heard acre, two acres talked about, but I'm, I'm not able to testify to an exact area of preservation. I believe you're referring to the center.
Yes, that center, that large center section, yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep, sure.
Mr. Trolle. John Clemente. Mr. Curly.
Hi, Brian Curly, 136 Fairfield Lane. Sir, Mr. Panzak, just so I'm clear, when you proposed to put together your landscape plan, did you review or look at the proposed stormwater plan in terms of the location of trees that would be removed and trees that would be planted?
Absolutely looked at the proposed stormwater management plan. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, well, like for instance, we're talking about this common open space that you're not going to disturb, yet the stormwater plan is talking about putting some type of underwater basin there, so I'm confused about how you can put it in underwater basin and not disturb it. Can you clarify that?
The plan showed this. We talked about it.
I'm just asking for clarification.
Undisturbed area was not where the open space was, or the stormwater management was.
Mr. Panzak, can you answer that question?
Sure. Roughly what Mr. Brosman said, uh, the, the stormwater management basins are not within the preserved or undisturbed open space area. And, um, we would have to analyze specific areas because there are currently many open space areas located on the existing site, and, uh, you know, the removal of trees versus the replacement of trees is, is a very specific thing. And we definitely take into account the proposed stormwater management as we take into account all the other, uh, features that we're, are being proposed, including site utilities. So, you know, the landscape plan has been fully integrated into the overall development plan, and I believe is an appropriate landscape plan for this development.
Okay, this might be a pretty obvious question, so does the removal of trees impact soil infiltration?
I am not a soil scientist, so I am not going to be able to answer that question.
Any thoughts about whether planting trees would improve? If there was an infiltration issue?
I think those are, and to my way of thinking, those are two separate issues. I think soil is, is a, has a certain characteristic. It is either permeable or, you know, it has certain characteristics, and, you know, trees applied to them or not, I think is, uh, are two different, are two different issues in my view.
Okay, but if there were, was a section of this property where there was a failure of soil infiltration and your... infiltration, and you're planning on either removing trees or planting trees, don't you think there would be some impact? Because there was a review done by Hillbeck in 2019 in the southwest corner, left bottom corner of the property where there was a failure of soil infiltration testing. Yet you're talking about removing trees and possibly putting in stormwater basin. And I'm confused as to why trees would, why you can't answer that the trees would help or not help that situation.
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to comment on soil infiltration and stormwater management.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Gado. Cindy Hansen.
Cindy Hansen, I just have one question. You're talking about a lot of protection and shading, and I was just wondering, was there any consideration for the houses that are across the street on Stratford Avenue for the exits with 76 cars or more vehicles coming in and out of this development? So with the headlights going and, you know, coming out and turning and going down the street, the existing residents, it seems to me, would be at a disadvantage from this plan with both exits coming down Stratford Avenue.
Yeah, well, all I could say to that is that there are two driveway points there. And, you know, that would be, I think, a minimum amount of entry and exit points, whereas, you know, there may be the possibility of another development type or style that would have many more driveway curb cuts and things along Stratford Avenue and...
There could be one on Eagle Road, though, and that's a commercial development there, so.
Yep, and, you know, that's not the plan that's being discussed. And, you know, there's only so much we can do in terms of a, an exit or entry point in terms of how landscaping could or could not mitigate headlights.
Okay, thank you.
Kaz Holloway. Ted Heimel. Catherine LaFarge. Mary Ann Mahoney. Jennifer Pichette. Margaret Rushman. Mr. Serene. David Satterfield.
Dave Satterfield, 207 Stratford. You mentioned a solid fence around, I think it was Eagle and Grant. What type of fence would be along Stratford?
We were thinking that we would replace the Eagle and Stratford fencing with estate fencing, four-foot open estate fence.
Okay. And you talked about preserving the tree line along Eagle. Is that part of the rationale for why there was no entrance onto Eagle?
No.
Okay, so that it's not a reason to not have an entrance there?
That's correct. Under this proposal, many of the trees in that particular zone would be removed due to, well, some would be removed due to disease and demise. But as I'm looking at that area now, the trees that are, they're mainly proposed trees and very few existing trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just seems like that would be a nice place for an entrance, but I think we've talked about that before. We talked about the lighting dispersment to Grant, to people along Grant, but how about along Stratford? Is there any light dispersment to any of the homes along there?
Yeah, we're showing, you know, the foot candle cutoff at the property line areas as zeroing out at that point. And because of the style and the optics of the post lamps that we're proposing, those areas would be very limited in terms of any light spillage. And I believe you may have heard my testimony about the existing lighting along Stratford. And there are two existing streetlights roughly at the two entrance driveways that we have.
Okay. Have you done any examination of the amount of trees that could be preserved if you were to do a single-family plan as opposed to the townhome plan?
The town, the single-family plan demonstration that has been shared in these hearings would imply that there would be a significant amount of disturbance due to street right-of-way development, the houses themselves, the driveways, the stormwater management. So it's our opinion that the density modification option in the plan that you see before you would give us the opportunity to preserve many more trees than a single-family plan would.
It just seems to me like a single-family plan with less buildings, more spaces between the buildings could allow more opportunities, you know, for landscaping and tree preservation because you'd have more green space, not the right term, but you would have less structures. So it just seems like a plan could be created that could preserve more trees that way.
Yeah, like I said, I think that in lotting out the site before you build the home, provide the driveways, provide the on-lot stormwater management, each lot would have its own stormwater management plan. I think the impact to the site would be, would be greater than what we're able to do in terms of the overall open space preservation.
Thank you. That's all.
Steve and Megan Sherry. Mr. Shuda. Mary Ann Mahoney.
I just have a very simple question. These big trees that you say you're going to take out, they have to have huge root systems that go deep. How long would it take a tree to compensate to catch the same amount of water that a huge tree would take?
Yeah, I am not an expert on trees and absorption of water, so really can't comment to that. But as I've stated in testimony previously, the code prescribes certain amounts of compensation for the larger trees and any tree, for that matter. And, you know, we are providing six trees for any tree 30 inches and above.
Is that what compensation means?
Yes.
So you're just going to have more trees, but the depth will take years?
Yeah, you know, regarding...
I'm just worried about catching the rain, the water, that's all.
Yeah, regarding root zones and depth, I think it's, root zones tend to spread out, and they're not necessarily that deep. Each tree might have its own unique characteristic of root depth, but, you know, it's a, it's a common misconception that big trees have deep, deep roots. Generally, root zones are spread out.
So if you put a, say, take a tree out that you know has deep roots, you want to put a similar tree in there, like it?
Well, you know, this is, as I've described in testimony, vegetation, trees are renewable. We take some out, we put some in. Theoretically, those are being planted in areas and in ways that would be appropriate to the new features that are located on the site. And that over time, this new crop of trees and landscaping becomes, you know, the canopy of the future. You know, with respect to stormwater management, we're not only planting those trees and in addition, many trees for one tree, which will, you know, be the canopy of the future, but there is provided engineered stormwater management associated with this plan, whereas there is none today. So we believe that from a stormwater management standpoint, we're going to be on the positive side of that.
Thank you.
Caitlin Silver. Gregory Zari.
Yes. Gregory Zari, 6 Forest Lane. So you had mentioned a, you know, the exchange rate, the trade-off of new plantings for the heritage trees, and I believe you said it was six trees to the, for a 30-inch, so six two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees equate to a 30-inch or greater heritage tree. And what was the largest, the size of the...
Largest heritage tree? I believe it's 46 and a half.
Okay. What is the height of the street lighting poles?
Mounting height is 14 feet.
Okay, so the lamp head is at 14 feet? And what is the height of the canopy of the proposed planted trees at the street areas?
Yeah, those trees would be 12 to 14 feet.
So the lamp head's going to be in the trees, basically?
We've, well, at planting, there's many different tree species that are arrayed along the driveways, so, you know, unless we talk about a specific lamp. But we try to keep trees away to some degree from the lamp post.
How many lamp posts are being proposed on the drives?
There's nine.
Nine lamp posts?
Yeah.
And your photometric study for light bleed off of the site considered only those nine lamps?
That's correct.
So no consideration for any floodlights or other exterior ornamental lights or any bleed from the interior of the building to the property line?
Yeah, our test is a conceptual plan that, you know, provides evidence that we can effectively satisfy ordinance requirements and, you know, those building-mounted lights don't come into consideration at this level.
Okay. The artistic, excuse me, no, I'm not there first. When you first began your design process on this project, were you given the townhouse layout, the locations of the houses for you to work with?
Yes.
Okay, so you were given a base plan showing where the houses would be, and is that correct?
That's correct.
Were you asked to rearrange the townhouses to suit preservation of the trees on the site?
We worked with the engineers to look at the edges of the disturbance area, and, you know, we did interact and look at areas where there could be the savings of a tree here or there. And that's, you know, what we did, yeah.
So there was some movement of the buildings relative to an attempt to preserve trees?
Well, not necessarily the buildings, but the grading perhaps associated with the edges of the building sites and other features that are part of the plan, stormwater management, for example.
So it sounds to me then that what you're saying is you were, you were asked to preserve as many trees as possible given a given townhouse layout?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the intent of the township's ordinances for preserving trees? We're not talking about protecting trees during construction, but preserving trees, in your opinion?
Yeah, I think we're being asked to save trees where possible, and, you know, that's what we set out to do.
I'd like to talk about the artistic renderings. Is it possible for you to call up the exhibits? I believe it was 24A or A24, right there? Could you, you could stay on the three images that are along Stratford Avenue. You might have to close some of the other images.
Yeah. What did you want to, is this what you wanted or the Stratford Avenue?
Stratford Avenue views. Can you explain in just two sentences how these renderings were created?
Yes. We went out, we photographed the streetscape, and we identified generally what trees we were seeing in those views. We cross-referenced that with our existing conditions plan and then had this integrated process of, you know, we believe these trees are going to be removed for driveways and other features. And, you know, we attempted to vacate areas on the existing photograph where those removals would happen. And then, of course, we did the best we could with trying to represent, you know, the proposed townhome features and our proposed landscaping overlaid on top of all of that.
Okay. Can you point out?
The microphone, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you point out for us where in the existing, we're on exhibit A24C, where the existing structures are on that existing photograph, that line of trees?
You're asking for the existing structures that are interior to the site?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I can't locate the existing structures.
Do we see any trees, any existing structures in this view, which is 24D?
I, I can't locate them.
And do you see any in this view in 24E?
Uh, no.
Okay, so these images appear to be touched up to remove those structures?
No, we didn't actively look to remove existing condition features.
But they're not visible?
They're not visible, no.
But you can see them from the road, but they're not showing up in your photograph? So, so that's not a true representation of what those views are?
I will testify that we, we didn't actively remove existing structures from the existing photographs.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
Let's go off, let's go off the record for a minute. We're at 9:44 and, Mr. Brosman, I'm sure you're going to have some redirect. And I know there's questions up here for the board that they have for this witness, so we're going to have to come back on the 30th. We're scheduled for the next night, April 30th. We'll continue with Mr. Panzak that night. Any questions?
Is that 6:30 PM again here on the program?
6:30, 6:30 PM.
I would just ask, did Mr. Brosman has one more witness after this? I would want to clarify that, just so I can understand where we're at.
One more witness right there, I believe, at least, right, Mr. Brosman?
Yes, that's my current plan.
Okay, he's not committing to having more than one.
So I will try to have...
But he's having one.
I'll try to have one witness available because I think that, I'm guessing that won't take, but, you know, with, with redirect of Mr. Panzak, cross-examination, one more witness, maybe it takes two hours, but maybe not. Is that fair?
Well, I mean, based on tonight, we, we want three hours and 15 minutes on one witness.
Yeah, but there's trees.
And there's going to be questions at the next hearing, so I...
So I guess that's my question, should I bring one of my witnesses or should we, if it ends a little early, we start fresh with one of my witnesses the following?
Well, I don't really have an answer to that. I would suspect that we're going to take up the next hearing with this witness and the next witness.
Fair enough.
That's three hours right there.
Understood.
Do you know how many witnesses you have?
I'm not sure right now. I'm not trying to be cute, I mean, maybe, I'm thinking three potentially.
Okay, and Mr. Brosman may have another witness after this witness. I mean, he, he, you know, he said he may, so...
Right now, I don't have a plan, but I have to figure out where I am.
Okay.
I don't have a plan for any others at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions, any board questions?
Yeah, I think you can close. We're going to have a motion to adjourn.
Well...
Oh, what time?
Yeah, we're, this, the hearings continue to April 30th at 6:00 PM.
6:30 here.
6:30 PM, sorry. And we'll pick up with Mr. Panzak that, that night.
All right, now we have a motion to adjourn. Somebody pay attention, I need a motion. Second? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Brosman?